Now. In order. Please join the. Only here. I'm glad to live. Why did? Hundred thousand invisible. Liberty. The layers please draw a roll this.
Mayor Pilon. President. Councilmember Rainbow.
President.
Councilmember Alders. President. Councilmember Bryant here. Councilmember Flattable.
Here.
Lieutenant Jacobson. Presence. Chief Schmidt here. F P clerk Natalie Johnson.
Here.
And your city administrator Scott Laner is present. That's the conclusion.
All right, thank you. That motion to. Approve the agenda or make any amendments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
It's my Brian.
Unless there's any objections, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda that is listed. Well, we have seven.
Motion, councilmember Brian, second from councilman Flattable, all those in favor, they signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed, motion carries. For evidence, nobody in the audience tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight has five items, approval of the city council meeting minutes and our regular meeting, March post-heat twenty two three. Approval of the claims. From March eleventh through April seventh, twenty twenty-three, and a progress report. Item C, approval ordinance amendment twenty twenty-three oh one regarding M S four permit requirements. And compliance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Standard. Item D, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three XX, fully proposed. Twenty twenty-four Upper Rum River Watershed Management Organization Budget. And item E, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three XX. Uh, changing Adrian Christensen's resignation date. To April seventh, twenty twenty-three. Luther Air and Sir Brian.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, councilmember Brian, and a second from councilman Flattable, all those in favor, they signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. No engineering items on the docket tonight. So Chief Schmidt, where the burden is up?
Yes, sir. You've been there for the whole. What the difference it be?
Yeah.
Sure exceed. Um, the three year review, we did their comparison year to year for the bundle part. Um, we did see a slight drop in our response times from the previous year. Um, and we did see a significant drop in our postal terms for the same month. Uh, there's a keyword that I'm not going to use because I kind of like this page that we're rolling right now. Uh, but the number is speaking for itself. Uh, slight dip in average number of firefighters responding to calls, um, not accounting that we see some variability in our work orders. Uh, any other fire units distribution remain pretty close to that fifty percent more come the month. For the month of March twenty twenty-three, the fire department responded to nine incidents by less than the previous month with an average response time of eleven minutes and thirty-seven seconds. Fifty seconds increase from February, so we're a little bit smaller than we were to the month of March. The average number of firefighters attending hospital service was at four point five, and we did report a sixty-five hundred dollar loss of fire for the month of March. Some calls of note to review for the month of March. On the fourteenth, the fire department dispatch to report a person unresponsive on the eight-five-hundred block of two hundred and twenty-fifth Avenue. Uh, firefighters assisted with care on scene, but also assisted with care during transport, which isn't uncommon when we have a third location for the fire. And what for the odds will be provided. By March fourteenth, later on, we're dispatched to report a vehicle fire on the two-two-eight-zero-zero block of Street of White Road. When crews arrived, they found a Chevy Tahoe on fire in the driveway. The fire was quickly extinguished. That word dollar loss, uh, reported dollar loss comes from sixty-five hundred dollars. Also of note, there is a minor accident between the county sheriff's squad. And now in fire department duty off the vehicle, and this was purely due to the snow night conditions on the drive. On the sixteenth, the fire department dispatched from hospital propane leak, leaking a full shot on the seventy-one-hundred block of Viking Boulevard. Um, crews did find dangerously high levels of propane in the full shot. Uh, part of the issue was with the snowpack and the ice, it really started to impact the main valve away into the house during the full shot. So they're able to quickly uncover that, get the gas. Quickly mitigated and went through a light building without any further issues. Uh, we're also working, the D N R has opened up their grant opportunities for this year, so the fire department is currently working on listing equipment to apply for that grant. Of all, the D N R grant does require fifty percent each per listed. Well, we have applied for five hundred dollars, we were warned, we would have come up with twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, as we go through identifying what equipment might be appropriate for the screen. We will make sure that we're looking at it within one budget to cover any additional expenses from our year on year. Uh, a couple of other things of note that have changed since my report. We are, believe it or not, slowly, and I won't even say slowly at this point, we're upgrading ourselves into the grass fire. Uh, so first, they take time over the last couple of weeks to make sure the grassland is still ready to go. All of our grassfire equipment is at the ready. Burning permits are also now required. When we hit that threshold of three inches of snow cover less. Burning permits are back activated. Um, there is discussion that, or there is concern this year that we will have a pretty nasty grass fires season because it wasn't a kind of process here. And even though we're seeing a lot of piling and pooling of water, um, and some risk of flooding in some areas. The vegetation is quite ready to accept the moisture that's coming in, and it's leaving the ground real fast because of a lot of the. Here, so that's something that we're.
What is that? Are there any questions? That's my plan.
So I have a couple of questions actually for you. One is, um, on the March sixteenth with, uh, Hobart.
Yes.
Finding dangerous high levels, is that something that you often see? And is there something that? Going forward that if you see this, if this is something that's common that we can? Inform our institutions about with our.
It's not remarkably common. Um, we probably see a handful of either natural gas or propane days during the year. This one was unique because it was an old building. And it wasn't a building that's normally occupied or been used. So by the time it was discovered. There was enough saturation of propane in that building that really didn't bring it to a critical level.
Okay.
And there was a fair amount of warnings, their point was really good. Reminding people with the monitor, so that we have. If your gas valve, your regulator, the meter where everything comes in, if that gets covered with snow, that it really can't, you know, so. Uh, that seemed to be the game to this event, but they're not remarkably.
Okay. I was just curious, could that maybe get some doing to the center website? Um, my second question. With the grass fire season. When does, do you just determine when burn? I had a question today from someone that wanted to know about burning. Burning ban, when about the burning ban stuff, is that different every year?
Yes, that's all regulated by the D N.
Oh, okay.
So the D N R. Constantly monitors, grounds, that, or any drought levels. And one of the things that's complicating this year, well, two issues that are really complicated this year. We were still in that drought. Area when we rolled into winter. And the fact that we got snow before we got cold. Really prevented that frost from penetrating as deeply as it normally would. Now, that's also working in our favor right now. With how much snow we had late in the season. It's dissipating much faster than otherwise it would have if we would have had a deep freeze this year. With the amount of snow that we ended up towards the tail end of winter, then I guess, how cautiously you can think of tail end of winter. Um, the water leaks evacuate much quicker than otherwise would. Now we're just challenged with the rapidly trending, steady temperatures that we. So the D N R does monitor that, we're the ones that issue restrictions, we're the ones that shut down the ability to acquire a permit. We're the ones that issue red flag warnings when they come up. Um, Southern, it's one of those is on the verge of some red flag warnings coming up right now. But that's all managed by the D N.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm ready.
I have two items, um, one is on the burn permit. When Natalie sent that out, I did. Posted on a local community Facebook.
For.
But, um, and then just, and I can't remember if I've asked this before, because it comes in my mind every time and I don't know if I've asked it. So on the March fourteenth, you've got sixty-five hundred dollars in damages. Um. I guess we need to let residents know that that the city didn't suffer fifty-five hundred dollars in damages. It was the, at the location, whether it be a vehicle or a house, individual, so. Um, if we can maybe put that in, then I will remember that we've asked.
Yeah, of course.
People know that. But, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, are you working with the Lions on any other purposes? I know in the past, we've had Lions. Talking about maybe some fundraising or something.
I personally have. So I have not heard from Chief Frog. I know Catherine Patrick reached out last year and was working on a couple of things, and then we pivoted a little bit on that initial request. I don't know that we've circled back through those.
You can just, you know, check with. Chief Frog and make sure stats and look on.
Absolutely. I can do that tomorrow.
Anything else from the council?
The council. Sawyer. Um. Two full courts in our chief. Yeah. I got an email from Center Point Energy, representative of Center Point Energy today about their. Did you copy that?
I just got one of them today as well.
Excellent, okay, and did we receive anything from them last year? Because they usually like to go every other year. Did we use?
Not.
We did not.
Yep, so we will be applying.
For a good spot, then maybe then. Fair enough, that answers my question, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's that?
Got your question?
Uh, he hit both of them at the same time, so yes. Yes, I never did last year, yeah, all right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and the council.
Good evening.
Now that it's good to be here with y'all. Um. Pretty standard month as far as calls for service numbers, but in order to meet calls, my update is probably really normal, so I told you ahead of time. Some aren't really called, we're talking about, so if you're all in, and we'll talk about it briefly. Uh, for the month of March twenty twenty-three, we had one hundred and five calls for service, three of those were to bar down, three alarm calls, twelve medicals, and five animal complaints. Year to date twenty twenty-three, we are back to twenty twenty-two, we're right on par, three hundred and five calls last year, year to date of two hundred and five this year for the fourth quarter, so. No change there. Couple of calls under the bar down facility, we did respond to a report of a, uh, probation violation, we did go from time to time where probation officer was still there. An identified juvenile is, uh, been found to have violated a probation in no distance at the facility, will place that as being under arrest. After the arrest was obtained, it's signed by probation, and they'll go to the people's hiring line of waste. We did respond on the twelfth to a report of a, uh, runway female, again, we responded to that area at the time, and it was. Getting a snowpack here over the front of the vehicle, picked up in a vehicle, so. Uh, he was out there as a model. Uh, we were at seven calls, um, so far, uh, for quarter one at Varna, and after we were at fourteen, right? All of this, good to hear. Uh. Excuse me, several calls around the city, uh, the fourth at three oh five P M, we responded to a business in one nine seven hundred block of Viking Boulevard. The business call, Dan, if you know, uh, everything, uh, radically, long-term, so she had entered a customer's vehicle, sitting in the vehicle with a deputy. They located the vehicle, they talked to her, and they turned pretty quickly, she was in a world of suffering, some type of crisis. She was transported by ambulance, she had been locked in the area before allowing her shoes on. Um, and it was pretty bold, so we, uh, yeah, there's some medical help. Following the end of fifth, four thirty-three P M, we had a deputy stop the vehicle, uh, for some equipment violations, one of which being the, uh. Step, the step bar, what's the word I'm looking for, the, uh.
Running board?
Running board. Straight, straight, was hanging completely off the vehicle, sticking home. Complete, uh, dangerous equipment, they stopped that vehicle and found that the driver in adult mail had a revoked driver's license. And, uh, was riding unincurred, uh, technology these days, it allows us to verify, can we ensure it pretty quickly now, we get presented with fake altered or fraudulent insurance cards. It's not uncommon, so this company, if they have to step the call progressive and. Terrified that the insurance had been canceled on the vehicle. Uh, this driver had four prior convictions regarding his own insurance, which led him to be quoted as taking a physical custody, well, time. Gross misdemeanor charges. Those are the type of, uh. Uh, violations that could be enhanced with time, if you have more than one, can handle the horse's rights, so. That person was booked at the jail in Oka. On the ninth, at eight forty-nine P M, we responded to the area of Saint Francis Boulevard and Viking Boulevard on the vehicle on the ditch. Uh, passenger wire reported that this person would have entered the vehicle, a female in front of the traffic. Um, and that she appeared incoherent. Running deputy located the vehicle, spoke to the driver, um, she told us that she was not from the area, got stuck in the ditch. Obviously, um, the deputy observed some signs of impairment and asked her how much she had to drink. They had some conversation culminating in the driver stating, quote, you know what? If you want to arrest, you go ahead. Uh, the driver was then arrested for D W Y. Uh, that was anybody to turn. Um, submitted to a breath test and showed results also legally limited. Again, book at the no point, you know, four three D Y. Yeah, remind people to drive sober, the conditions, uh, over the last month or so have been horrendous for regular, non-drunk. Driving, um, to attempt to drive drunk, it was too risky, but worse than. Thrombo, driving, drug attacks, so, and, and to that point, on the thirteenth, eleven oh five, very similar involved. Um. Eleven oh five P M, we responded to the ninety, the middle block of one eighty-seven. Again, a report of a female that had driven a vehicle off the roadway, struck a mailbox, she was trying to leave the scene. There were some bystanders that stopped her, they were trying to keep her from leaving, they observed this female appeared intoxicated. Our deputy arrived, spoke with her, she was still in the vehicle, she refused to exit the vehicle. Um, we tried to do some, to go, to be prepared to have her step out of the vehicle, to do some field providing testing, sort of investigate what happened. Definitely refused, um, and the deputy had to call for backup, Ramsey P D came along with some other deputies. Um, we had to do sports to remove her from the vehicle, and in the process of that, the deputy's body camera was part of the uniform, ended up above the snow. Um, she was ultimately arrested. And, uh, booked on charges of second degree D W I test refusal, so definitely refused to provide a test, what based on driving on drunk condition, intoxicated, due to start with D W Y, and a refusal to test. She also had the ignition interlock requirement, which means. He's required to blow into the ignition interlock when you could hear from start. The deputy that were investigating noted that the interlock was not only disabled, it wasn't even. Man attached to the vehicle, the on the vehicle did not function. Type of violation, also they, uh, didn't have a driver's license with her, got expired registration. Uh. Driving without due care, fail to stay in her lane, and then of course, obstructing the legal process, so. Of charging legal process is the charge to get for not following the lawful orders of a police officer, and that's what happened here, thankfully the officer was not injured. And Ramsey P, we are grateful for their assistance on that one. Fire, you've already mentioned the one on four feet, at nine thirty-six P M, responded out with no fire, I report a vehicle fire on Sherwood Road. That fire was quickly brought under control by the fire department. There were no injuries, and then she touched on the property damage track, uh, after or during the incident, um, so. I did actually, just before the meeting, get an email from our insurance company, talking to your insurance company, so it's probably for getting that pretty well squared away, and I'll copy you on that too. And then the last one, I just wrote down. Like, uh, slid down the aisle, he tried. Turned around and looked for the car, it wasn't there, slid down, using the duty vehicle.
Yeah, so. Yeah, ultimately, it's all lies. So I said, both vehicles were parked unoccupied as they are, and we'll pick the scenes, and. Um, deputy here had come back his vehicle, you know, and it's on, it's on the driveways, so. Fortunately, relatively minor damage to the cars. Vehicles. Our apologies, chief. Then, um. And we follow on the twenty-eighth at three eighteen P M, we responded to the. One eight-eight zero zero block of the after, there was a report of a male that was. Very, I think, that's something noted. How was the resident at home, the male left before the deputy ride, but. Again, with the snowpack, um, it's, we don't need the cannon to follow people, the snowpack, we can follow their footprints generally. This man was walking and hiding in the hundred people yard street. After the deputies followed the fresh footprints through the snow, but he was a reference to that incident, and again, was quote, that you didn't find, didn't find trespassing. Unusually busy, uh, month for the city, and now then, as far as in custody arrests, abnormal, so. Hopefully, uh, that is not a trend for, uh, following the court, but, um. We're always here, we're always ready to observe, so, um. One other note too, that I just noticed coming in today, there are a lot more incidents, so, so I remind you, which can be pleased. Please drive sober, please drive carefully, watch the speed, I reminded the other drivers, please watch open the white in the back, and. Drive during the weather with the rest. With that, it happens at any court. Alpha.
Mary Carol.
Yeah.
Much appreciate your work, thank you. Keep those, that, it's down. We've already got the dogs out on this one. I'll be interested in the art description. Of that incident next month, we, we do have somebody from the jail that. Did the same. So, okay. That was exciting. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Administrator, can you give us a quick update on five items?
I will, I'll give you the quickest update I can, but, uh, we'll go into these, uh, one by one. Uh, the first item I have on there, A B, an administrator update is talking about the, uh, twenty twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty twenty payroll tax refund, so. Typically, when we get letters from the I R S, um, they don't typically turn out like this, but this was very nice in our favor. So in twenty twenty, uh, our taxes were nine thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and two cents. Somewhere along the lines, we made an additional payment in twenty twenty, and the I R S caught it, and it is in our favor, so they are going to be refunding us. Four thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. We got the letter on it, we haven't received the payment yet, uh, but Lori Yeager and Natalie are working together, once that check comes in, we'll determine the best pace to be able to put that. And, uh, but the, the, the good news is the I R S is actually sending us some money back from twenty twenty, which, uh. Doesn't happen very often. So, uh, good news there, so. I think that covers that. B. Adrian's goodbye, so a little bit in the consent agenda, you approved changing, uh, Adrian's last April. Um, the last Friday, the seventh, uh, she was, if you remember, going to be here this evening, and her last night was going to be on the eleventh. Uh, some personal stuff came up, and she needed to leave the state and, and, uh, be with her family. So we backed that up to Friday, and she wasn't going to be here tonight, but she did ask me if I, if I can read a proof letter to the council on her behalf if you would, so. Says, uh. Dear Mayor Pilon, City Council, City Administrator Laner, and Finance Deputy, uh, Clerk Johnson, I would like to take this moment to express my deepest gratitude to you. Unfortunately, I, I am unable to be there in person to share this with you, so I asked Administrator Laner to read this letter on my behalf. When I started this job, I had no idea what to expect. What I knew was that I came to serve you in whatever capacity you asked of me. I was overjoyed to be given the chance. To be a part of something bigger than myself, and honored to be trusted with the task before me. Your support and encouragement along the way helped me to have. The courage to face it. And overcome the challenges I faced along the way. You called the best out of me and showed me what I was capable of. Thank you for allowing me to serve your city. Deepest thanks, Adrian Christensen. So. She wanted to be here in person and be able to share some of that, she put this together, um. Adrian is going to, um. We talked about a little bit with, uh, in the consent agenda. We will talk about the, the new administrative assistant here when we get into some of the further business, but. She also is, Adrian has volunteered to come back a day or two to be able to help transition a little bit and make some contact between. Men spec and, and suit all of the county and some of those things for the new person. So Adrian, you may see Adrian back a day or two, uh, would be either the third week in April or the last week in April. Um, just to come back and help a little bit with the transition, but for all practical purposes. Adrian has moved on to a new position here locally in the city, she's forever grateful, she said, for the opportunity she had here, and, um. We wish her all the best and thank her for the time that she spent here, be able to, to help the city out, uh, when we were transitioning her, so.
And just to clarify, this is, uh, her choice. And that she needed part-time hours, she was able to get part-time hours. Uh, locally, uh, with the church. And, uh, it's working very well for her schedule, her family's schedule. And she's leading in good stead. With the city, so any benefits that she's owed, all of that will be taken care of properly. In transition, so. We appreciate that the work that she's done. She has always a high reputation there at the front desk. And very diligent with, with the other duties that she was assigned. And certainly pleasant to work with, and we're grateful that she's willing to step in and help. Train a replacement as well. Our gratitude.
Get said it better, for sure. I'm sure people misread the tone when they come in, because there are a lot of things, or take care of residents since they came into town. Move it on, sir, hold on, okay. Uh, administrative, uh, administrative assistant position update, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just push that back a second, because we're gonna talk about that underneath. New business, I'll be more happy to answer any questions or go through any of that, uh, when we get down to there, so, uh, we'll just, uh, table that for a second. Annual audit update, um, real quickly, Lori and, and Natalie have been working diligently with, uh. Bergen K D, K T V. They have been, when I say they, Lori and Natalie have been providing a lot of documentation to them electronically, putting together, uh, all the information that needs to be. You see that?
Yeah.
Um, the audit will actually start the week of May eighth. But there's a lot of work that's already been going into the audit and that, so, um. That's really the update I wanted to say, you knew that it was coming, that it's scheduled for May eighth, and that there's already been a lot of work that. And actually, Lori's gonna be in the office this Thursday, uh, working in the office with Natalie instead of remotely to, uh, kind of put some final touches on it, and get things a little bit better prepared, so. Lori Yeager will be in the office. Anything you wanted to add, yeah, or they cover which one?
No, just that they asked for a lot more information this year than I was asked for last. Oh, really? Yeah, so. I hope it will be really good.
Lori Yeager seems as though we're in good shape, so that's, that's, that's. I'm sorry.
Well, and the work, the thing, we're, we're doing much better, and we're, we are organized. And that's gotta. Be shown by what we do.
My, my understanding is they're, they're asking. Different questions and. A different approach to what we've had.
Very different than what we dealt with last year. Yeah, but a lot of document, documentation has been asked for. Which is good, because that's good to have double checking for. And is Lori able, is she providing that, or is that something you have to look for? It's both of us. Okay, so like, they wanted all the bank statements, they wanted all the bank reconciliation things, they want all of our grant money, they want, you know. Lots, for every check that was written, needed to go to them. That kind of thing.
So, so do you think that, um. With what they're asking for now, some of the. Uh. Issues we've had in the past might have been caught at, at the time?
I, you know. That's what an auditing firm is supposed to do, so. In my opinion, in the twenty twenty, it probably should have been caught, the I R S that we've had. You know.
That's type of information you're providing now.
Right. Right.
Closing out the books, so that. That's kind of.
Right. So I just think it's a different approach to the audit than what Mr. Pope has had done in the past. A lot more automated, everything is going to be much more automated. Okay, and it'll be interesting, because they said they'll be in the office for a week. So to expect that whole week of May to be audit.
And then we'll have the results by.
I, we should have them by June, we will, they'll be able to present in June.
So we have to get them to state typically, if we don't get extensions by the end.
Yes. So, and the least, the goal is that they will be here at the June meeting, and then we'll submit. If after you.
That's my plan.
So with having that audit happening and Lori coming and just coming this week. Are you, because you're, you're down in staff. Are you in need of? More with that, getting ready, or, I mean, how are you feeling?
I'll know more on Thursday.
Okay.
When we actually go through the whole checklist, because she, she has put stuff into it, or uploaded into their system, and I've uploaded into their system. So I think once we sit down and then I go through it all. It'll be much better.
Okay.
I'll, I'll look better in the afternoon.
Reach out.
Do you need help? Yeah, if you want to come in and ask the phone, we can hear more than one of you.
Is Karen working at all, or is she?
Uh, she could work.
Let me know if Lori can be back for the next. Month or year.
Yes.
Anything else on that from the council? Right?
All right, last thing I have here, just kind of a reminder, recycling day is scheduled for May twentieth. Uh that recycling event will be on Saturday, May uh twentieth, like I said, from eight to one. And uh just to invite the mayor and all council members, uh. If you're available, be able to volunteer, it's a staff tonight event, I will have staff here, including the uh public works folks, and uh. Anybody that would like to join us on that data for that event, I'd be more than happy to. Or like to welcome you, and I'd be more than happy to have any assistance in any way we can, so. I think it would be a big uh. Recycling center, just the last few days have been extremely busy, and the weather, it seems to go with the weather, so by May twentieth, I think uh. We should plan for a big attendance, so.
That hasn't been as as much of the years passed, because we're open so much now, and some isn't quite the number we then. But it's still, we've had some good. It turned out a lot to be pants. If, again, if if council uh can't make it that day, or if this is not making that day, if you're going to lose let's stop, and also we can plan accordingly. Make sure we're staffed accordingly, we appreciate it. We would send it out to. From when we're all ready.
We will, Mayor. Mayor, can I say one more thing about recycling? Is she here? So I was over at the recycling center today, and it kind of fits with what we're talking about here, and you know, we have. Christie over there, and we have Amy over there, and I was in there checking on a few things and talking with Amy here, uh lady, or this morning. And uh a couple residents came in there, and I, it was really nice to hear. Residents talking about the recycling center and how impressed they are with all things are. One of the gentlemen told me, says, I've been coming to this recycling center for many years, and says that I've never seen it in such good shape. And if I had a dollar for every time somebody told me that the recycling center smells good. And and we, uh it's amazing what people pick up in there, but we. If you haven't been to the recycling center lately, just take a peek in there and say hi to the ladies, and just kind of take a look at what's going on there. We do have more things that are coming, there's more things that are coming that we want to change, but in the short amount of time that the two of them, and then they've done an excellent job, and. The. The residents are seeing it, the residents are feeling it, they're wanting to share feedback, uh they caught me, and two two gentlemen today caught me, just in the short amount of time I was over there. And I I just think it's really heading in the right direction, there's a lot of good things that are going on in there. And like we've always said here at the city, the two big things in the city that people are excited about is their recycling center and their burning permits, and uh. I think we're hitting both of those, so uh just if you see either Christie or or Amy, uh maybe just give a roll of pain for all the work they put in there and and uh. And that that it is, it's it's going, it's not going unnoticed, people are noticing that there's a difference over there at all. Thank you to both of them for doing a good job.
I uh I did stop in there today, I see they've got the uniforms now.
Yes, they do.
And uh did have a conversation there, they are working very well together, I mean, they they make a good team. They really coordinate with each other, they care about each other, and. Christie, with the end of day, and a bunch of cardboard show up at the end of the day, she was concerned about what she was leaving from any of the most days ago. Uh very good team, I think they represent us very well as a cities. And if you get by there, just to. Take a look at what they're doing, it looks great, and it's gonna keep getting better, but they're representing us well, you know, functioning a lot of people. Uh they also, I noticed they're keeping track of where materials are coming from, we have them. What appears to be some moving companies that decided our our cardboard recycling is better than places that pay, so. I think I said somebody came up, Old Mount or somebody, they. Bring recycling and all that, they're like five moving companies from cardboard. We just have to make sure that as we go along, we're we're at least breaking even in the recycling. And um. And that we're serving our residents well, and we're going beyond that, and not making money, we'll have to talk about it too, so. Right now, it's going extremely. Councilor Flatt.
I actually wanted to mention, because I did have this question before, when I was coming, when they were talking about the. Um if we could explain to our residents what, how we make money from the recycling center, because. They see people coming from other places, and they don't understand the concept of that, some people don't. Those are the people that face, those that are walking and connecting.
Yeah, so the the recycling, um we we have county grants to cover some of the expenses, so for our our personnel. We have county grants that that we apply for each year, and that covers part of that expense. The other part, the hauling. Uh generally, what we haul, we get money for, we're hauling scrap metal, aluminum. Uh paper and cardboard, those things we get paid for, and they generally cover the hauling costs. The the glass and some of those things are part of the county, we have a a formula that we submit our our tonnage. To the county, qualified grants to the county, so the idea there is. Between the hauling or or the fees we get from the. The vendors that we haul to. And the county, we try to make that a break even proposition, that's why the charges that we do have are what they are, so they cover the costs.
Ms. Mayor.
Councilor Rainville.
So follow up on that, and what the. One of the reasons that we did the security cameras is that as a cost to the residents is what's illegal dumping. Um but with security cameras, um we can track the license plate numbers, issue things, if necessary. Um but I think we found that that has dramatically dropped as far as illegal dumping.
And when we first put those cameras in, that was again another county grant provided for those, and that's when they weren't staffed. So those doors were shut, people would be dumped up on seven. And so we would turn that video footage over to the sheriff's department, and they would. Go remind people that they can't do that, and if they did agree, then it'd be a citation, if they can clean it up or paid for it. Uh with the staffing, we haven't had near the problem. Um but the cameras, like I said, were paid for with a grant a number of years ago. Works in our favor, that if there is a problem over there. Uh we have it on the cameras.
The the legal dumping is not just something that we don't hate. But but even dropping things off that we do take outside of the building. Is is technically legal, that you need to bring them into the building, well, and then put them into the. Receptacle, so um people shouldn't be dropping things off in the front, and I think that's been pretty minimal also. Compared to what it used to be, whether it was staffed or not, but when it wasn't staffed, it wasn't. It's worse, but.
We had a few people figure it out in the cameras, and so they'd go around a corner and stick their appliances or electronics in the corner. Uh they would be surprised if the cameras go around the building at this point, so. We haven't had a call to the sheriff's department in quite a while, that would be a call. We actually had somebody. Somebody had uh dropped a desk off near the end of the driveway, probably hoping their garbage people would pick it up. Wasn't in bad shape, and so, again. Because uh because of recycling ladies that are are very frugal in what they do, and they they care very much about it. Actually reclaim the desk, some public works out, they picked it up, and it's now in the recycling center, it's. Their office staff, I couldn't believe it, somebody had dumped that desk.
And they cleaned it up super nice, and it was great in there, and it's very. Hate to do this, Mayor, but I have one more. The other thing I just wanted to share on the recycling is this week, we've started to do expanded hours now, so tonight was the first night, uh Tuesday night here. That uh we're open from eleven to seven P M, so Tuesdays and Thursdays will be open starting tonight. Uh eleven to seven. Wednesdays and Fridays are eleven to five. And Saturdays is eight to noon, so those are the new expanded hours that we talked about a while back. Got staff in place now, we're in good shape, training's over, so starting, well, it's over already tonight for the first night, but starting tonight, it started our. Our new expanded hours, so. So that is posted on our city website, it's on the city website, it's all posted outside the building. And there's like, it's in Facebook.
I will.
All right, anything else? Administrator.
That's it, sir, and I will wrap up my administrator update with that.
Hey, city council. We have one item in the new business. And that is the approval of resolution, authorizing hire of Donna Ogdon. Full time administrative assistant position. Councilor Flatt.
I make a motion that I'm going to authorize the hires of Donna. Ogdon for the full time administrative assistant.
For the motion from the Councilor Flatt, who is the second?
I haven't done any.
Also, member Rainville is the second, we need discussion. People satisfied with the R C A, the information was provided? Now, we had, we had some good interviews, but um. It was the unanimous choice here to uh. All right. Uh Councilor Brian.
One quick question, when is she fired?
Uh we. At this point. Uh well, what would be, sorry, nineteenth?
Yeah.
April ninth, late from tomorrow. And she's. Available, and then. Adrian is available to help train.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, yeah, one more question.
Yeah, uh I just would like to thank um. Mayor and Sharon, and the staff, Natalie and Scott, for working on this, getting it taken care of so quickly. Hopefully, we won't see a big gap in.
I I I think we'll be pleased. You know, nobody's gonna quite be as cheery as Adrian was at the front desk. That's a lot to live up to, but I I think Donna brings a lot of professional skills, whether. Or work well, and then giving Natalie a little bit of relief. As well, so. Working without Adrian, I I I do want to commend. Madeline. Uh I mean, they're signing things, you're not quite certain, she's there most, I think, but uh she's been very thorough. Very efficient, very neat. Um and I think she's really grown into the job. Yeah, we can begin with, if you were to throw her at the front desk, it might have been a little daunting. But she she owns it right now, so I think it's been a great transition, I think. Adrian, it trained her well, I I noticed they were going through the other day when I was there, the take my numbers. packets on how to do everything, so Madeline feels comfortable doing that, and I think that'll help Donna get up to speed quickly, so. Uh the team is doing extremely well, very pleased with. The office staff and and their teamwork and collaboration, and how they're working so well with the public work staff, public works is in. A tremendous year with all the snow and forms we've had, like equipment challenges. Um but I think the entire team is working very well, and our administrator here can be commended. Appreciate the special. Fire departments in on a regular basis, deputies right in a regular basis. It's it's a, again, it's coming. Low oil machine right now, and. Councilor Flatt.
I had the. Privilege to work today over at City Hall, and I'm exhausted. I do a lot of things in my, in my work, but it was exhausting, but what I did notice is um. The staff is so willing to help, um. And you all respect each other very well, and that. From the top down, so I'm, I just, I just was very. For all the questions that I asked today, Natalie, and so sorry. It was, it was pleasant to work, it was a lot of work, and uh the amount of. Work you are doing um on both sides, trying to get things up and running on. Computer and people with miles a week, I mean, it's. Finding, you know, everything, the mistakes, plus what we need, the corrections that need to happen, plus everything's happening on a daily basis. I my head is spinning, and so. Uh thank you for your tireless effort, thank you for your leadership, because um. It was, it was impressive, it was, it was nice, it was, it was a pleasant experience to work with staff, so.
You're making it sound like you're.
Yeah, I might be back later on, but I think I'll be one point now. Yeah, I'm trying to get an Amy later in the meeting.
I appreciate those kind words, and that was off my scent, and it was joy, it was a joy to have you in there today too, and I think. Some of the things that you're working on, you know, Katie, a little insight on some of the things that are happening in the office, but. Uh your willingness to come in and devote your time and help on it, there is greatly appreciated, what you do today will wear about those things.
Welcome.
And you learn from one of the best.
I.
Little bit of.
It was daunting, it was a daunting cat. I made it so that Natalie can really proof the newsletter and um make a few more corrections and.
Can can I ask along those lines without digging into, opening up that can of arms there, but. Are there, are there other months that still need to be caught up on, and that's?
Oh, yeah. I believe in those.
Okay, is that something you're willing to hopefully post in?
Sure.
And after you complete. All right, we have a motion and a second, although in favor of uh hiring Donna Ogdon in the administrative assistant position, please signify by saying aye. Both. Who carries?
Ms. Mayor, there's nothing else, we'll fill it out.
Right. We're both within. Andy, you look like you're.
No, I'm good, I just was, something was going through my head, and it was good, it's already out.
All right, motion is second, we are in here. Forty-six.
Is that a record?